Right, zoning board of appeals meeting. Thank you for attending. Before we get started, I'd like to read a small statement that gives an orientation of how we conduct business before the zoning board. The Board of Zoning of Appeals is a group of seven of your neighbors or peers appointed by city council to pass judgment on requests for variances and other matters that are brought before them. A variance is a relaxation of the literal provisions of the zoning ordinance. Petitioners must indicate a hardship or practical difficulty running with the land that would warrant the granting of the variance. The board will hear the items in the order that they appear on the agenda. When the item is called, the chairman will verify that the petitioner is present. The city administration will summarize the facts of the case. The petitioner will then be given an opportunity to address the board to explain a justification for the action requested. After the petitioner makes their presentation and answers any questions that the board may have, the chairman will open the public hearing. Any person who's wishing to speak on their request should raise their hand, come forward, and when they're at the podium state their name and address and their relationship to the property, such as they're the next-door neighbor, live behind the property, et cetera. They then should state whether they are in favor or against the variance request and give reasons for their opinion. Comments must be directed through the chairman. Comments should be kept as brief as possible and closely pertain to the matter under consideration. During this activity, only one person will be recognized to speak at one time.
Mr. Bloomingdale?
Yes.
Moving on to Agenda Item 3, Approval of Agenda. Are there any questions or comments or modifications to the agenda that members of the board At the conclusion of the public comments, the chairman will close the public hearing. Once a public hearing is closed, no other public comment will be taken unless in response or city staff would like to bring forward? Mr. Evans? to a specific question by a member of the board.
Mr. Chair, we have received a request from the applicant for Case C 482* which
The board will then make a motion to approve, deny, or table, which means delay, the request.
was to be heard tonight, and he has requested that that be postponed into the November
In order for the request to pass, a minimum of four votes for approval are needed.
19 regularly scheduled Board of Appeals meeting.
If the request is not granted, the applicant has the right to appeal the board's decision Anything else you see in November coming up to make that problematic, or? to the Oakland County Circuit Court.
Not at this time.
Not at this time, okay. Are there any other modifications that you're aware of, Mr. Evans, or any board member? Those of you that are in the gallery, if you don't have a copy of the agenda and would like one, there are some outside the door. No? Okay.
Chairman?
Yes?
I ask Mr. Evans if it would be appropriate for us to have an official motion to postpone,
Mr. Evans, if you could, could you call the roll, please?
or is this an administrative decision you can make on?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bloomingdale?
I hear.
Well, we can just make the administrative decision. Mr. Clark?
Hear.
Mr. Courtney? If it, if no one has any objections, we'll just go ahead and do that.
Hear.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Hear.
I'd like to do that if it's, if you can work that, work it in that manner, it'd
Mr. Neal?
Hear.
Mr. Current?
Hear.
be the quickest.
Mr. Lambert? Yes, okay, so, and just for the benefit of anyone here who might be in attendance
Hear.
Moving along to Agenda Item 2, Approval of Minutes for the September 17, 2013 meeting.
for 482*, that will not be heard tonight, and it is tentatively, it is scheduled for
Are there any requests for alteration, errors, et cetera, that have been noticed by any
November 19th, same time, same place.
of the board members?
Right.
If not, if I could have a motion to approve, it would be helpful. Okay, well, thanks.
So moved.
Thank you. So moved, thank you. Got a second? Moving forward to Item 4 on the agenda, Hearing of Cases, Item 4A. Thank you. Mr. Evans, could you read the, call the roll for the approval of the minutes?
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Courtney?
Mr. Evans, can you give us a rundown on the facts of that particular application?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Current? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
The subject property is located at 2245 Alexander. Mr. Lambert? On the overhead screens, the property is circled in the middle of the screen, and this is a residential neighborhood located between Dequinter and John R. and between Big Beaver and Maple Roads. The subject property more specifically is located at the southeast corner of Alexander and Paris. On the overhead, it is outlined in red. The subject property and all surrounding property, as evidenced by the yellow color, is zoned single-family residential. The property is a single-family home. And here's a close-up view of the aerial of the property. And the subject matter involves a request for a variance to install a shed in the front yard. Now, on this overhead, Paris is at the top of the drawing, and Alexander is to the right of the drawing. The item in the middle labeled 2245 is an outline of the house, and in the upper left-hand corner of the drawing circled is the proposed location of the shed. And in this overhead schematic provided by the applicant, the shed is located in the lower right-hand corner, and he's also indicated in the upper right-hand corner of the property drawing a potentially compliant location for the shed. He's provided some additional illustrations here, and I'm just going to run through these quickly. The board has received these items. That's a picture of the shed that he wants to place in the northwest corner of his property. And what I'm looking for is a, nope, I didn't have it in there. I thought I had another slide in there. What I want to show on this slide is that the shed being in the upper hand, left-hand corner of the property is proposed to be in a front yard. Now, our zoning ordinance defines the yards or the open space between the homes and the streets as front yards. Now, in the instance of the front yard to the north portion of the property, it extends the full width of the lot from Alexander all the way to the lot line to the west. So essentially, all the yard area north of the house and parallel to Paris is considered a front yard. The reason why he needs a variance is accessory buildings such as sheds are only allowed in rear yards. So if he's successful tonight, he'll be allowed to have a shed in the upper left-hand corner of the drawing, the front yard. So I'll now entertain any questions from the board.
Mr. Evans, I do have one question. Regarding the utilities that's adjacent, is there anything from city engineering or building that they would raise any objection to having a structure built there that, is there any easement or any utility features that cut under the applicant's property there?
You know, I haven't checked with that.
I know it's, what, slab-on-grade structure?
It should be, yeah. Yeah, I haven't checked with them. I would like to state that the property immediately adjacent into the west is owned by the city and designated right now as a stormwater detention area.
Okay. Are there any?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Evans, essentially what we have here is a home with two front yards on both streets and?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Courtney?
Just to make sure, this, the proposed location would somewhat screen all of the crap that's sitting out there for the sewer and whatever else. There's all kinds of junk out there.
You know, let me show you a slide that the applicant has proposed.
Yeah, there is.
That's a view from Paris looking south, and that's where he wants to put his shed.
Yeah.
So this is existing, this is what he indicates is proposed, so there are some utility features in the public right-of-way adjacent to his property in that corner that are there.
That's, that's what I, okay, that would put all of the, all of the stuff in the same area instead of having two spots then.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes, I'm curious if you could describe a little bit what those items are, because it looks like there's a very large, or two very large openings, an electrical panel, and some sort of flow diverter valve or flow diverter pipe?
I don't know what those items are.
Well, there's a sewer lift.
It looks like a lift station.
From a sewer station that lets off excess gas.
Yeah.
The one that curves over. You don't even see it there.
Certainly, I'm confident the, oh yeah, we have that picture.
Yeah, that's.
I've seen similar stuff.
Other than the, the pictures provided by the applicant, this is what we have. I, I mean, I could find out from engineering, but I wouldn't have that answer tonight.
I understand.
Basically, this whole rear part of the house, or rear part of the property is utility use as opposed to yard use.
The rear part of the, well.
Actually, it's an immediate.
It's in the right-of-way.
Yeah.
Let me back up, yeah. Let me see if I can provide an aerial here that might, well, I don't think our aerials are.
Yeah, it doesn't show.
Clear enough to show on the aerial, but there's no question that in the right-of-way in that area, he's got what he's showing.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions for staff? None? At this time, I would like the applicant to come forward and to make their presentation. Good evening. If you could state your names, and then you can go ahead and provide any additional information. I'd like to, like to also state, I appreciate your submittal. You gave us a lot of detail as far as how the structure would be built and whatnot. That makes our job easier in some regard to visualize what you want to do, but feel free.
Thank you very much for accepting our application. My name is Adriana Santa. My husband Nick Santa. As you provided, we are living on 2245 Alexander Drive, Troy, Michigan, 4083. First of all, we requested that variance because our backyard, as you can see on the pictures, is very small. We have a patio built there, and if we are building the shed, we barely have a little bit of space between, you know, the patio and our fence, plus it's covering all of our view over there. Then, we requested that part of the property is ours, and we requested to use that, first of all, to cover that ugly view that we have over there. Actually, that's why we let those shrubs to grow, to cover a little bit of it, plus, you know, to make this space looking more appealing and beautiful than it is now, for us as owners. Those were the main reasons that we applied for, you know, this. And he has lots of tools, you know, to do the gardening, and he needs to store them somewhere, so. For now, they are on a tent on our porch. We put a tent there with them. I don't know if you have questions, George.
If I would have the shed built and the compliance location, it's kind of living in a prison, I would say, because it's, I'm sitting in the porch, I don't have that view I have right now, and like my wife said, that ugly sight of those pipes and lifts, that pump station, whatever that is. And out of my .21 acres, I would say a quarter of the whole property is mine only to build that shed. And to me, it's not fair why I'm paying so many, so much taxes for so much land, and it's a quarter of what I can use.
And plus, this is going to give us more privacy, you know, because you cannot see from the street, or sometimes the city of Troy, people are working over there, and you have no privacy over there, so.
So, if I can summarize for you, and correct me if I am wrong, your hardship is in part based because of how the lot is situated, where you essentially have the requirements of two front yards.
Yes.
And then also, you have, you have an aesthetic issue that's presented by the necessary utility equipment that's just off-site, that you'd like to screen. Is that what you're looking at?
Yeah, we want to cover that, and I told you, our backyard is kind of small on the back. It's very wide, you know, on the side of the house, but on the back it's not as large as the other side.
Okay. Are there any questions for the applicant by the board, for the applicants, rather? No? Seeing none, I'm going to ask you to sit down. We may ask you to come back up, as there may be some questions that are created, you know, may come up during the discussion, but thank you. Oh, wait, excuse me, right now. Mr. Clark?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I live in the neighborhood, in fact, I'm your neighbor just around the corner. I live in Milverton. In fact, I'm parking my car, my Jeep, right across from the utility area, because, as you know, the street's been horribly ripped up. It looks like it's going to be a good job when it's done. So, really, the only question is, I've noticed a lot of utility vehicles there, and that is a very ugly thing to have to look at, and I have never noticed the smell that you described, but as you, even in your note, I, I walk on the other side of the street because I, that's the closer area to my home, but could you describe the smell? And of course, I think none of us may be scientists up here, but that building's not going to block the smell, is the point. But secondarily, I think the view, namely the utility trucks, we can see the pictures, and I'm familiar with what it looks like, but please describe the utility crews that are in and out of there. They're probably there even more frequently than I'm aware of, because I'm not on that street all the time.
Yeah, when it's a power outage or a storm, big storm, they're coming, because they want to make sure everything is working. It's a lift station, it's collecting all this water from the neighborhood, and those big pipes which are in the middle of, between my house, right behind the fence, there is a big, two big pipes, I think, underground. And that pump lift gets garbage to those pipes, probably, that's the. So what's happening when it's hot and humid, like once, two weeks ago, I was streaming the grass around, and you have to keep the nose closed till you get out. And sometimes, depends how the currents moves, you can get that smell even.
On the patio.
On the patio, when I sit in the patio. And there, then I have other inconveniences, like, excuse me. One year, they have a problem, I don't know what they were doing, a worker from, city of Troy, probably, forgot the crane open, I mean, lifted up, and he moved the truck forward, and he hit the big cable from, I think, AT&amp;T. He broke the pole, the transformer fell down the sidewalk, and we're without power. And all my wires were hooked up to that pole were snapped. I never told nobody, but it put a crack on my wall in, on that room, because nobody asked me, do you have any problems? So they restored the power right away.
Okay.
And then they put that generator, diesel generator, and if it's no power for three days, that generator's going to run night and day, and it's noisy, it's smelly.
Okay, well, I appreciate you letting us know that. I know that whether you have the shed there or not, those are some features that we can't really opine on, and I, maybe the fact of life of some of that equipment. One question I do have for you is that you had indicated that your western property boundary, which is marked by the white fence?
Yes.
Now, you said on the other side of the fence, in addition to the overhead electrical lines, you said you know there are below-grade sewer lines that run back there?
That's, the way I saw on the.
Are you saying one?
There are some maps, older maps, I saw when they were starting the project. It's right in the middle between that fence and the other, the next property in the back.
Anything I want to mention is, and I don't know, we'll be able to get you, I think, an answer tonight as to what we can and cannot allow, but I just want to make you aware, and I'm not a city engineer, but if you, just so you understand, if you are allowed to build this shed, if we choose to let you, give you the variance, because of the proximity, if at some point in the future, if they're ever doing major work there, it may very much cause the removal of the shed in order to do the work, because you are close to that entire utility space. You're aware of that, aren't you? I want to make sure you're aware of it.
Yeah, I'm aware.
I don't know that anybody's going to do that, but.
That case, because they did all kind of work in there, and they never had problems with my property, except that some people are not, I don't know if these ones or the AT&amp;T guys over there in the back, there are those panels.
Right.
On the back, so they.
Well, I understand, but I want to make sure you're aware.
They play with all kind of garbage, actually, she collects them every week.
Okay, well, I want to make sure.
I don't have a problem with that, because I want to have that cleaned, that's the whole point.
I just want to make it very clear, you're aware, because you do have an alternate site, it's not as desirable for you, but when you start excavating and you need to get down 10, 12, 14 feet in some of those areas with the offsets and whatnot and shoring requirements, it could impact the structure or part of your yard, which the city will replace. However, when it comes to the actual building structure, I don't have an answer for that, but I want to make sure that you're aware of that potential eventuality down the road, let's say, X number of years, when you do have an alternate location. So I just want to make sure that that's, you're aware.
Approving it will take the risk, you know?
Okay.
We are assuming that risk for that.
Okay.
And I forgot to tell you that we talked to our neighbors, because all of them, they've got letters, you know, and they came and told us that they've got the letters, and we've got the letter from them.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'll send them if they have objections.
I put a small picture in there, because some of them were saying that I'm building the shed in front of my house, which, which results from the letter itself, because most of people doesn't know, Cornell House has two front houses, so they, they understood they want to put the shed in front of my house.
Okay. Thank you for this. I'm going to note, and we'll pass it along to the board, and also make sure Mr. Evans has it. From what I gather here, you have seven different neighbors?
They are all around, the ones that they can see.
And they're all?
The ones that they can see.
They're all indicating no objection, and they've all signed. Okay. If you could all review this, and then we'll get it to Mr. Evans. Thank you for that. I was going to ask you if you had any feedback. Are there any additional questions for the applicant by the board? No? All right, well, thank you. What we're going to do is we're going to open up a public comment period. There may be no one here to speak on it, there might be, and then, of course, we're going to have a discussion of the matter, and then I'm sure we'll be able to move this towards a vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would like to open the public comments section of the meeting for this particular item. Is there anybody here who would like to speak on the matter? I'd like to note, there's nobody in the gallery who would like to speak on the item. So I'd like to bring this back before the board for discussion. Is there any thoughts on the matter by a board member? Mr. Current?
I got a few. First of all, I want to compliment the applicant for their incredible job of portraying all of the, their desires and wants for this variance. It was very easy to understand, very clear, and incredibly well-done. Second, we have to focus on items that affect, that are in effect regarding the ordinance. The smell has nothing to do with the ordinance at this, for this particular item. What we do have to base our judgment on are five criteria, and these are standards for our review. And number A says exceptional characteristics of the property with which the variance is sought may compliance with the dimensional requirements substantially more difficult than would be the case for a great majority of the properties in the zoning district. And when I was looking at the aerials of your subdivision, I noticed that although your side yard, the side of your house, is defined as a front yard, there is no, is not a front yard to your neighbors. In other words, the opposing neighbor has a side yard. So really, we have two, on each side of the street, we have two side yards, sides of the homes, let's call it that way, because technically they are front yards. In addition to that, I noticed that to the west is that large easement for utilities and city property. So I see a particular, what I see is an exceptional characteristic, different from the rest of the homes in that subdivision, where they are, they don't have two front yards, and the front yards that they do have, the other, the other neighbors have, actually, their front yards face other front yards. Yours does not. So looking at that, I, I'm in favor of granting the variance, because I don't believe you have, I mean, I believe definitely you have an exception to a normal front yard. This is not a normal front yard at all, and it's based on your property, not on your desire to have that shed put in that specific location. In addition, the other requirements where we have to vote on regarding the, is it harmful or does it alter the essential character of the area? And I find no way that it alters the character of the area. Considering that you do have a, some large utility items just on the right-of-way next to your property, I don't see this as any, matter of fact, this is much more pleasing to look at than those utility items within a few feet. So, in a nutshell, I see that you meet all of the requirements for the variance, and I'm, I'm in favor of granting it.
Could you, or would you be willing, Mr. Current, to put that in the form of a motion?
Oh, sure. Do we do that this time? Maybe other people have comments.
Well, I wanted to ask that of you, but is there anyone else at, a member of the board who would like to comment on the matter before you do such activity? Doesn't look like it, so if you want to go ahead.
Yeah, I move that we grant this variance based on the five criteria. It does have an exceptional characteristic to this property that's not common to the rest of the properties nearby. The characteristics which make the dimensional requirements are not of a personal nature, they're of, of the land itself and how your property is situated on that street, or the two streets. I find that it's not harmful and doesn't alter the essential character of the area. So with those items, I move to approve. Support.
Thank you, Mr. Current. Is there a second? Okay. Mr. Evans, I don't know, it looks like we have about four people wanting to second the motion.
Wants to be the first seconded.
Wants to be the first. I think Mr. Eisenbacher was.
Thank you.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the applicant's request, and it's been seconded. Mr. Evans, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Current?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Bloomingdale?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Courtney?
Yes.
The variance is granted.
Congratulations. I hope you enjoy your new shed, and thank you. Moving forward with Item 4B, Mr. Evans, can you give us a rundown?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This property is located on Bin Brook, which is in a residential neighborhood south of Waddles and just west of Beach Road. In the overhead, the property is outlined in the, in red, and I should stress that the packet that was part of the official board agenda incorrectly outlined the property at 2549, which is one property to the west, as the subject property, so I need to correct that there tonight for the record. The property is at 2529 Bin Brook, and those exhibits in your packet were incorrect. The subject property and all surrounding property, as indicated with the yellow overlay, is zoned single-family residential, and the house is currently used as a single-family In this drawing here, Bin Brook is at the bottom of the picture, and what the applicant proposes to do is add a covered porch to the bottom part of the house, which is actually the north part. Now, that's the architect's rendition of the covered porch area that he's proposing. And there's another rendition. If I can back up, the city code, zoning ordinance, indicates that any portion of the house needs to be set back at least 40 feet from the property line along Bin Brook. Now, with this addition, the proposed setback will be 32 feet, so they will need an eight-foot variance in order to construct as proposed. That summarizes the request, and I'll turn it back over to the board for any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Evans. Does the board have any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'm going to ask the applicants if they could come forward to make their Good evening, thank you for coming.
You have announced tonight?
Just need you to state your name and names, and then you can go forward with your information.
Sure. I'm Mira Mecca, and my husband.
The subject property and all surrounding property, as indicated with the yellow overlay, is zoned, single-family residential, and the house is currently used as a single-family home. In this drawing here, Bin Brook is at the bottom of the picture, and what the applicant proposes to do is add a covered porch to the bottom part of the house, which is actually the north part. Now, that's the architect's rendition of the covered porch area that he's proposing. And there's another rendition. If I can back up, the city code zoning ordinance indicates that any portion of the house needs to be set back at least forty feet from the property line along Bin Brook. Now, with this addition, the proposed setback will be thirty-two feet, so they will need an eight-foot variance in order to construct as proposed. That summarizes the request, and I'll turn it back over to the board for any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Evans. Does the board have any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'm going to ask the applicants if they could come forward to make their presentation. Good evening, thank you for coming.
You have announced tonight?
Just need you to state your name and names, and then you can go forward with your information.
Sure. I'm Mira Mecca, and my husband?
I'm Ben Mecca.
We homeowners of the 2529 Bin Brook. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to appeal to this decision. Just wanted to make a quick clarification on what we actually going to appeal tonight. It's not the actual build of the porch. The porch actually was approved by the city. It's just having a cover porch. That was the appeal that we came forward tonight. So for a couple of reasons, this house obviously has been owned by an old couple for very many years, and we would like to upgrade it to make it more comfortable for our family. We have two kids, and my father-in-law also lives with us. So just to kind of increase, you know, the house area, you know, and make it more enjoyable, more up-to-date, per se. We feel that by doing that, we also will have a good impact on increasing the value property, and also impacting, you know, the surrounding properties, giving them a positive impact on increasing, you know, their value of their homes. We don't believe that we'll interfere with the surrounding houses for any reason. The, obviously, the light supply will not be impaired by this cover porch. Will not be a safety issue for our neighbors or anybody else surrounding the area. With the exception, they'll look beautiful, so we have brought some of the design that you already seen, so maybe some more pictures.
Thank you.
It'll be more enjoyable for everybody.
Right.
We like to have a cover porch for the safety reasons as well, to protect the house from snow, rain, any water coming in.
Mr. Evans?
Let me just ask that you could step closer to the microphone so we can hear.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You can also bend it towards the.
If you'd like, if you'd like, we'll give you those drawings back, but if you could hand them to me, we can take a look at them, so you're not trying to hold them up. But I apologize, I was hearing you fine, but I'm not sure everybody else would be able to.
And if I could, Mr. Chair, based on, we would need a copy of those drawings for the record, since you are presenting those to the board, and that will be part of the things that they use to consider why they're not to grant you the variance.
Absolutely. You do have a copy of the maybe last page, but the first two is just the same design, but maybe different stoning on the outside, just more of an appearance. Different building structure, but I mean, as far as the porch sizes and everything is exactly the same. So it's like option one and option two, looking different on the outside, like one has more of a river stones, and the other one is just plain square stones.
If I could, I don't mean to interrupt you during your presentation, but the information you lay out is, at this point, a want. You'd like it to be covered, and the deck itself has been approved. And as you correctly point out, the waiver that you're looking for is to have it covered. From the information you're providing, it sounds as if it's really more of a want rather than a, as far as a hardship or a difficulty. I'm not, what I want to do is, we want to, and I understand all the neighbors surrounding you are in favor of this, they have objections, all that is good information, but if there's anything in particular that you're facing a hardship by not having the covered, the covered, excuse me, it's hard for me to talk tonight, the covered roof over the patio or the deck, please make sure you provide it.
Yeah, I was going to get to it next.
Okay, thank you.
So my next item would be just as a safety item. Usually, when you have a deck that it's not protected, not covered, you have a potential, all the rain and wind blowing snow at your front door will create, you know, safety issues. So we're having small children and also an old man living in the house. We want to eliminate the risks of, you know, falling due to the ice or building water in the front of the house. We don't like that water also to get into the foundation. Usually, if you don't have a protective cover, it's most likely that you will have that water hit in your foundation. And safety reasons, again, snow, slip and fall.
Okay. Are there any questions for the applicant by the board? Mr. Lambert?
Just one quick question. Looking at the pictures there, it looks like your current house's design, there is a covered porch there right now, so what you want to do is extend the porch out, and because there's going to be a covering over it, that's what the issue is going to be?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bloomingdale?
I have the same problem where I live, with wind blowing, snow, or rain onto the porch at our house. And mine is inset considerably more well. Similar to that, it's not quite as wide. And the other thing that comes to my mind, I think I heard a father-in-law there, and that's another condition I share with you. So I think from a safety standpoint, this being, this request being a reasonable.
Are there any additional questions for the applicant? No? Mr. Krent?
What is the deck or the floor made out of? What material?
It'll be concrete.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Are any other questions for the applicant? No? Mr. Courtney, no? All right, thank you. I'm going to ask you to sit down, and we're going to open up the public comments section. We may have you come back if there's some additional questions, but then we'll decide.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to open up the public comments section of the meeting for this particular agenda item. Is there anyone in the gallery who would like to speak on the matter? Sir, please come forward. Just need you to state your name and your relationship to the property, and feel free after that point to provide your comments.
My name is James Worth. My name is James Worth. I live right next door to the home that's in question right now. Lived there for seven, eight years, and I actually knew the couple that used to live there. They actually built that home new. I think it's been since sixty-four, sixty-five. Great couple, they just didn't update it the whole time. So I can understand, A, for that nice, that need to kind of enhance the outlook of the actual home itself. Obviously, they've got the approval for the porch, the porch part of it, so as far as the over, the covering, I can see nothing but improvements on the house as well. So I just wanted to kind of come up and say that I was, you know, here for the neighborhood, which I think he pretty much had the good coverage of signatures for, to move forward with that, and give my two thumbs up on the matter.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the board for the gentleman? No? Thank you, appreciate it, sir. Is there anyone else in the gallery who'd like to speak on the matter? Seeing no one else here, I want to know for the record that there is no one else interested in speaking on the matter. Sir?
Mr. Evans, your word.
Oh, Mr. Evans, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to make sure that we acknowledge publicly that we did receive seven.
Thirteen.
Thirteen, was it?
Yeah.
Thirteen comments in favor
Yeah.
of this request from various people in the neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Seeing no one else, and there's no other public comment on this matter, I'm going to close that portion of the meeting, and I'm going to bring it back to the board for discussion. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a question for Mr. Evans. Seems like we've dealt with this numerous times since I've been on this board, and if I don't, if I'm not recalling incorrectly, there was a question some time ago, and this may have been quite a few years ago, about if the variance is granted for the covered porch, then walls could be erected, and they could be closed off for just a full addition onto the house. Can you comment on that, what your thoughts are, as far as what would be permissible if they wanted to completely enclose it or not? And I think Mr. Courtney, if I'm not incorrect, addressed that at one of our meetings, and there was some discussion about putting, you know, wording into the variance approval that could or could not happen. I don't recall exactly.
I think in this particular instance, Mr. Clark, they have provided architectural plans to the zoning board of appeals indicating exactly what they were doing. And so the first test the city would look at is if there indeed was a question as to whether or not what was built was compliant, would be the record. So we would take a look at these plans and compare them to what's built. Clearly, this is what they've indicated they wanted to build if they're successful tonight. It's the best thing we can look off of. Beyond that, well, I think for this case, they've been very clear, so that would be a better test than rather trying to render an interpretation as whether or not certain walls could be put up, or certain areas could be enclosed. It's pretty clear to me what they're trying to do.
But I guess my point really is, there wouldn't be any threshold that would be having been met, that would allow them to essentially turbocharge the next step potentially down the road. And maybe I'm trying to draw a connection to a previous case that we had a long time ago that doesn't apply here. I'm not sure. I'm just curious.
Yeah, I think the only other thing I could offer is that the ordinance does allow uncovered decks, porches, and patios to extend into the front yard, required front yard, a distance of ten feet. So somebody could put up an uncovered deck, porch, or patio structure thirty feet off the front property line. Now, there's some restrictions on that. They cannot include fixed canopies, gazebo, permanent enclosures. The grade can be no higher than the first floor. They can't be roofed in any way. I would opine that in general, if you put a roof on it, in the absence of very clear plans like we have in this case, it's not clear to me that you couldn't put walls on it, or portions of walls, or enclose it.
To add to this, and I guess, I think you hit the nail on the head, you said permanent enclosure would not be allowed, or would require them to get another variance? That's my interpretation of the rules. And you had mentioned in your description that permanent enclosure, and that would mean not just the roof, but you'd have the side walls. So if they were in, in this scenario, is if they came back five years from now, that they would have to be back before us or the board at that time to get approval to do it. You know, that's another matter.
Yeah, that would be a different matter.
If that's the case, it seems like to me that's our control valve, to make sure we don't get outside of the ordinance through a kind of a backdoor creep factor.
The first test that's going to be is if somebody comes to the city with something encroaching into the front yard setback on a single-family house in this, you know, in this neighborhood?
Yeah.
The first thing the city's going to look for are walls and a roof. Because when we start adding things like walls and a roof, certainly if it has a roof, it's clearly defined as a building. Then the next test is, so we really just have to look at each individual circumstance, but in general, the less it appears to be an uncovered deck, porch, or patio, or the less it appears to be an enclosed deck, porch, or patio, the more likely they're going to be able to build it. But the more it looks like it's covered or enclosed, the more the ordinance is going to, the more like it's going to have to, for the ordinance to apply to not allow that.
Right. As I understand your input, is that we don't need to, if we were to approve this, we don't need to build in what-if language to address a scenario that frankly, the applicant isn't looking to do, as we know it right now.
To me, it seems very clear what they're looking to do, and I don't think you'd have to, I don't see any need for special conditions to talk about it.
Right.
Suggested enclosures and walls and.
Well, I agree with you. Just my opinion. I mean, the rest of the board may feel differently, but I agree, I think we're okay, because there's another mechanism to review it at a later date if this scenario was to occur. You know, and it's a worthwhile exercise to talk about this, because if it didn't happen here, inevitably, it will. Somewhere down the road, someone else may be in a similar situation.
Sure.
Julie, or Ms. Dufresne, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I would just caution the board that what you're talking about is the reason that you build in the practical difficulty and hardship aspect, you, what you're talking about is going down a slippery slope. So if you grant this variance, and you say you identify, well, you need to identify the practical difficulty or the hardship, when they, if and when either they come back, or somebody else comes back wanting to do something else, you've already identified a hardship or a practical difficulty. So even if our ordinance says that it can't be enclosed, you've already given them a leg up or a step up on, you know, their hardship or their practical difficulty. So that's why when you, if you're going, if the board, depending on what the board's going to do, you need to make sure you identify the reason for your finding your practical difficulty hardship. Do you understand my input there?
I think so. I know, in this particular case, we're talking about covering it.
Right.
Not closing it. But in some, I guess this is a worthwhile point for me to make this point, is that I understand, as I understand what's been presented by the petitioner, their hardship is angled, I'm not sure that I agree, I would call it a hardship, is more of a desire to improve the aesthetics, which is not, but then a safety issue. I don't know that it really fits with the narrow purview that we have to work with. However, what they want to do to the property, I can say, is reasonable, and they have neighbors who don't oppose it at all. So that's why it's not something that's 100% cut and dry, you know, either for or against. But as I understand their hardship, I don't think they're meeting the definition of one. And actually, having said that, I'm asking now you, Ms. Dufresne, is my logic wrong, or am I missing something with the rules?
No, I think you're right. I think that we're, that while this is aesthetically pleasing, and the neighbors agree, it's, we're still starting down that slippery, that slippery slope. I mean, we're talking about something in the front of the house, as opposed to the back of the house, you know?
Right.
But your analysis is correct on this issue.
Right. Okay. Are there additional questions for staff, or questions, or comments by the board as we discuss this? Mr. Krent?
First of all, again, I would like to comment, compliment the applicant, because they did a very excellent job of providing us with the visuals, easily to figure out what you're going to do. Incredibly well done. The problem I'm having, I'd love to see this approved. You know, what we've got here is 1960s architecture, which at the time was presentable, and it looks bit dated today. But every home in your entire neighborhood looks like that. You have a recessed porch, you have a covered porch of sorts, because it's recessed into the, into, behind the front setback line. I just, the only thing I could say is, it's a fabulous solution. I think it'll make the neighborhood look better. The problem I have is, I can't find anything in our ordinance, or anything in my head, to say that you've encountered some hardship with the land. This is the issue we have to deal with. It has to, we have certain guidelines to approve a variance, and if it doesn't meet those guidelines, we can't willy-nilly approve something just because it looks great and the neighbors love it. Similar thing happened to me years ago, and Mr. Eisenbacher and Mr. Lambert know about it. We had a neighbor building a large garage in our neighborhood that everybody objected to. It was an eyesore, still is. What did I do about it? What could I do about it? It, our ordinance evidently was interpreted such that they could, that was allowable. I feel that this is a time for our ordinance to change. I think updating from a 1960s look to something much more contemporary, much more attractive, the upgrade of the entire neighborhood benefits the city. I think you probably will have to go down the same road I did, which was to initiate a change in the ordinance, and we call it a zoning ordinance text amendment. And it took me two years of my life to do this, but I persisted, and with the help of city council and planning department, a new ordinance was passed that would restrict the size of those garages. I don't know if you immediately need this porch, it's like something you've got to have next, this fall or this winter, and I'm not And I'm not saying it's going to take two years. Because that was a very contentious issue at the time, my issue, not yours. I don't think you have a contentious issue at all. I think you've got a situation here where you're going to improve the lot of the city. The entire city will benefit from your hard work. So my, unfortunately, I can't find anything in the land that's causing a hardship to you. So I can't vote to approve, but what I can suggest is you provide the planning commission a zoning, suggestions for a zoning board text amendment. And I'm on the planning commission. We'll review it, and I would stand with you on this issue to amend our ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. I do, I'm going to stick a question I have in here before other members in the board make additional comments, because I think it might be useful. Ms. Dufresne, the purpose of our board, the board or these boards in general, is this philosophical question for you or an opinion I'm going to ask of you, is to take what's in writing, in addition to the information provided by the applicant and the regulation, and then administer it the best we can and take in effect those other unusual aspects of a certain situation that you can't possibly write a rule for all the time. How much latitude do we have? These issues have come up. I think I've remembered times that I've been on the board where we've approved something that, you know, it was on the rear of the house, for example, that nobody complained about. There was no issue. It was aesthetically nice. It was a frankly, a who cares situation. Sounds like a great idea. Why say no? I understand what you're saying about a slippery slope. Obviously, as a board, we try to help the applicants or the citizens essentially do what they want to do with the land in a reasonable sense. So having said that, how much latitude do we have to move off when we clearly have no truly identified hardship?
Well, you have, as a board, as board members, you have wide latitude, I would say. But from the city attorney's office position, we would end up having to go into court defending the position that you take. And I'm not so worried about these applicants or perhaps their immediate neighbors. But someday down the road, if there's another similar situation, the city would have to go in and, or show that we're not being arbitrary, capricious in our decision-making, and if we're granting variance to one but not another, and both properties are similarly situated, and we don't have good reasons for not allowing the variance in this instance, but giving it in this instance, those are the issues that we and the city attorney's office have to worry about.
I understand. Mr. Bloomingdale?
Is this a comment or a question for staff?
No, it's a comment.
Okay.
With all due respect to the statement the city attorney just made, I think one of the tests of good decisions is, what would you do in the same circumstance? What would a reasonable person do in the same circumstance? Now, I see a lot of positives here that Mr. Trent has articulated, you know. An improvement in the neighborhood that will probably lead other people to do, if not the same, something very similar. Makes property, and I realize we can't take into account financial considerations, but I did hear that there's an elderly person living in this home. I think that that person is more susceptible, I know I am, I'll just put it that way. I can speak from my own personal viewpoint. You're more susceptible to falls, and I think that that, in my mind, creates a reason to grant this variance. I also concur with, I think what I heard Mr. Evans say, that cross the bridge when somebody, they sell the home and somebody else come back who wants to enclose it, you deal with that issue at that time. So I'd be very strongly in favor of granting this if we consider a way to do that.
I have a question for you, Mr. Bloomingdale, if you will. I agree with what you're saying about what a reasonable person would want to do. And in the planning commission, often they make decisions, they have a lot more latitude, they have a lot more things to address, for example, and a lot more aspects of what reasonable to do as far as renovation or construction makes sense.
I agree with that.
But we have this very narrow, specifically tied, almost handcuffed, where we sometimes have to interpret that's why we're here, otherwise we wouldn't even exist. Does the aspect in your mind, when I put it to you that way, though, does the reason, what a reasonable person would do, does it really apply?
I think it would. If I lived in this home and I had concerns about a parent falling or hurting themselves, and I saw a solution to it, I would very much do the same thing.
Okay.
I don't see anything wrong with looking at a challenge or a problem or a difficulty and then trying to apply that standard. What would reasonable people do in the same circumstance? And I've said it once, I'll just say it again. I see some positives here where a lot of people win, including the city.
Okay.
So I rest my case.
All right, thank you. Mr. Eisenbacher, actually, Mr. Eisenbacher, before you comment, if you would allow me the latitude of the board, as no one objects, I do have one question. It's really for the applicant. I have to bring them up. My question is, and I'll have to ask them or bring them up, but I'm going to relay it right now, is I want to find out if the applicant, that there's an opportunity to gain what they need by minor modification of the front and have a deck constructed in the rear, which would be compliant. And I don't know if that touches on your comment or that answer's going to be useful to your comment, but okay. Go ahead, sir.
Okay. Well, I'm looking at the language that we have to deal with. And characteristics of the property which shall be considered, exceptional narrowness doesn't look like it applies, shallowness doesn't look like it applies. It's the same as several of the other nearby houses. Smallness doesn't apply. Regular shape doesn't apply. It's rectangular. Topography was not clear. Is there, it's not visible from the aerial view if there's any hills, undulations, or is it just dead flat? From the aerial view?
It's noted that it's flat.
Okay. From the aerial view, it didn't look like there's any vegetation to the front of the house that would be affected one way or the other. And the last item is or similar characteristics. Or similar characteristics is where I would throw in accessibility and usability of a home. And that would tie into what was previously stated about being able to egress easily into the front of your house and to make it safer, in my opinion. And that's how I would go about approving this.
Thank you, Mr. Eisenbacher. Question for staff. An issue of accessibility to the home, does that at all relate to an aspect of the land or is that a more of a building structure issue?
I would not say that that's related to the property itself.
Okay. For what it's worth, I agree. I'm just looking for a way to make this work, but, okay. Could I have the applicant come forward, please? One or both? Thank you. I can't speak for the board, but I think you can kind of get the feeling is that if it was just a simple approval, we would very much approve it. I don't think that'd be a problem. We hadn't taken a vote, but that's my read. Question I have for you, and I think you heard me say it, is, is there a way to get what you need, the extra deck space and whatnot, by, let's say, not covering the front, but to have something in the rear where there may be no conformance issues or an issue that's be easier for us to approve a variance on? In other words, like a rear covered deck area, for example. I don't know the layout of your house. I can't really state that. When I drove by it, I didn't obviously consider what the back of the house is like. But what I'm asking is, is there a way to acquire what you want without needing to have this request approved? And you may not be able to answer, I understand, but it's just, we are in a situation where it'd be very difficult for us to have a legal standard to hang our hat on. And I'm not saying that the board wouldn't approve it because we haven't done a vote, but I'm...
We're already doing an addition on the back of the house.
I'm sorry?
We're already doing addition on the back of the house.
Oh, you are?
Yes.
Okay.
So I don't think it's a possibility to do it on the back.
Okay.
That's what we're asking in front.
Well, that's useful information for us because basically, the option's not there, is what you're saying.
And I'd like to maybe comment, if I'm allowed to.
Sure.
Just some closing comments. Obviously, we have two different options that we can go with. And I believe Mr. Evans has seen the without cover and the cover porch. Both options were presented.
Those were not included in the variance application.
I thought you did, but...
That's okay.
Yeah. So the porch, from our perspective, will be there, whether it's covered or uncovered. But again, for safety issues, we would like to have it covered.
I understand.
So if the board can consider that, then we'd be grateful.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I think there may be a question for you. Mr. Courtney?
Isn't there a covered porch at the back of the house?
There is an area on the side of the house. Yep, there is a small area in the back.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was reading this right. Yep.
Okay. Any additional questions for the applicants while they're here? Mr. Clark?
So to be clear, there's a covered side porch?
That's going to be a dining room, so that's...
Oh, so that's going to be blown out?
Yeah, it won't exist.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks.
Question I have for the board, is there anyone here who is interested in making a motion either to deny or approve, or is there any additional comments on this particular matter?
I've got additional. Go ahead.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
I mean, if it fails, that's the same option they have otherwise.
Right.
So, I mean, there's no use in delaying, there's no additional information that I believe we need. I mean, if there's no further comments...
Just one little tiny one.
Mr. Grant?
Just one comment. I mean, like I said earlier, I think what you're doing is absolutely incredible. The front would greatly improve your neighborhood and your own home value. It would improve the city. The problem is, okay, we approve yours, let's say we approve yours, and then six months or a year later, your neighbor wants to do that same thing because they say, boy, that really looks great, I want to do that. So we're going to be seeing all your neighbors, one by one, coming up, and that's not the normal process for the city. We don't want to have to approve variance. What we want to have is an ordinance that benefits the neighbors and the city. So I feel the proper way to handle this situation, unfortunately for you, is to change the ordinance, say we can have covered porches, and then everybody is equal, and there's nobody having to, you don't have to, none of your neighbors have to pay that fee to have a hearing and all that process, and not just your neighborhood, but there are many other neighborhoods. I think there's a great advantage of having a covered porch. You actually have a front porch that is covered right now. Your entranceway is covered from the rain and the snow. It's not as large as this one maybe, but it's certainly covered.
We think it's small, so you may make a decision. That's why we, that's why we close.
I'm sorry. Sir, excuse me, I'm sorry. Your information is useful, and I want to make sure it's on the record. Could you come forward and say that so it's on the microphone? That's all. Thank you, I appreciate it.
The existing porch, we're closing, so we make it larger living room because that's the only living room in the house. In order to have a porch, we extend it outside the property, so that's what we're asking for.
So the existing, the existing porch that is right now showing there...
Right.
That will be wall.
...be part of the living room. Because our living room is so small currently due to the length side of the house, with kids and the father-in-law, we need to have a little bit more space. So we're extending that to make a bigger living room. And then the porch is just a mimic of what we exist and we have, but just extend it a little bit forward. That's all we're doing.
Very good. I understand.
We understand. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thanks.
We should get that on the record. Mr. Grant, is there anything else?
No.
Okay. You know, I'd say, as chairman, I usually don't like to make motions because I'd like to, I don't feel it's proper. But in this case, I think it's necessary to make this one, and we'll see what happens. I'm going to make a motion that the application be denied as a hardship and an issue with the land does not exist as presently described. So I'm making a motion to deny. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Mr., as I say, I'd like to open this up for discussion on the particular, on the motion to deny the application. Is there any comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Lambert?
Yeah, well, first, as we've all said, the design you've presented to us is wonderful, and I'm sure it would enhance not only your home, but the neighborhood itself. And I think we're all in agreement here that the planning department and planning commission, as Mr. Grant had mentioned, needs to look at this ordinance because, to me, the fact, I can't see a rational basis for why you can have a porch go out into that encroachment area, but if it's covered somehow, it requires action on our part to give you a variance. So I hope the planning department will move on this quickly. In the past, we've been, within reason, been flexible in bending the rules to a degree. And if you were coming asking us for maybe a two-foot variance, something in a small amount, I would be, wouldn't have a problem with it. But to me, an eight-foot variance, I think, not only goes too far, but in my opinion, it violates the spirit of what the city ordinance is. So essentially, based upon the comments were made by Mr. Grant and our chairman, I feel I have to vote to deny the variance request.
Are there additional comments from the board on this particular item? What we are right now is discussing the motion as before to board to deny. Mr. Clark?
You know, I, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too really see both sides, and it's difficult sitting in the seat because obviously, we have two residents who want to do something great for their family, and that also equates into good action for the community that we live in. Having said that, Mr. Grant's comments are well-taken. You know, essentially, a piecemeal approach just isn't fair to those people who, you know, never even applied for it simply because they knew that the ordinance was clear in this regard. And I do have a really difficult time seeing any hardship here. This isn't a situation where we're talking about a home with two front yards. This is a normal parcel, essentially, and that issue doesn't come to bear here. So, and Mr. Lambert's comments, I think, are very reflective, I think, of where I am here. So I'm going to vote no, even though I do, hopefully, you can talk to the appropriate folks within the city government and get the ordinance changed. I think Mr. Lambert's logic is correct. You know, why can the porch be there but not covered? But the ordinance is crystal clear. And once again, I think that, you know, I'm a rule of law type of interested citizen, and I think that that is important to follow. And I think the city attorney's comments are very well-taken in this regard. I think she's given us very good advice related to this case, so I'll be voting no. I mean, yes on the motion, I apologize.
Any additional comments or questions regarding this matter? Mr. Bloomingdale, is that you? Okay, go ahead, please.
In listening to the comments and understanding Mr. Grant's interaction and the experience with the planning commission, I think it would be a good idea to go that route. So I'll be voting with the majority, unless I vote first.
Any additional comments from the board? No? Mr. Evans, could you call the question, please?
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Regretfully, yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Bloomingdale?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Courtney?
Reluctantly, yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher? Mr. Eisenbacher?
No.
Motion to deny is granted.
Unfortunately, I think that we were a little bit hamstrung, and we couldn't do what we wanted for you. One useful piece of advice is, and I'm willing as chairman, although I'm just the chairman of the zoning board, and Mr. Trent will take this back also to planning, because he is our designated planning department representative. This clearly is an item that should be resolved. This is not going to be the first time, and it's not going to be the last time, that we deal with something of this nature. To the extent that you can go forward with your modifications of the house and leave the ability to add it later, when we can possibly make a change -- I can't speak for the planning commission, obviously. I would advise you to do so, but at this time, we have to deny your motion. Thank you.
Just want to--
Uh, Mr. Grant?
-- to the applicants. I will, right here, pledge to work with you, to help you get this porch through the zoning -- through the planning commission. So you can have -- I'd be happy to give you my contact information. The planning commission meets the second and the fourth Tuesday at 7:00 p.m., either in this room or the council boardroom. And I'd be, again, I'd be willing to be your champion to get this changed. Anything -- the only other thing I could say is, when you do pour the concrete, put the footings in beforehand.
He's out of order.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
All right. That's my comment.
Moving on, item 4C has been tabled to the November 19 meeting, so we will hear no information on that. That closes out active cases for today. Moving on to item number five, communications. I have nothing in particular. Does staff have anything communication-ized to bring to the board?
No.
No? Any other board member have anything unique to bring up? Item six, miscellaneous business. To my knowledge, there is none tonight, unless something's come up with you, Paul. No? I'd also now like to open up section seven, which is a public comment period. If anyone would like to speak before the board on any particular matter, or in the gallery, you're welcome to do so. Is there anyone who would like to make a public comment for a reason they would like to disclose? Seeing none, I'm going to close section seven and move on to item eight, which is adjournment. Thank you all for coming tonight and your hard work. We'll see you next month. Thank you.